Good evening, everybody. Welcome one more time. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council this Monday, December the 18th, 2023. Let's call this meeting in order. invocation this evening. Welcome, Craig Massey from Hope Church.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. Good to see you again. And let's pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and for those who have been given the opportunity to serve the people of South Haven. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give them a spirit of service. Remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be leaders of your people's needs. Help them see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew all of them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of your creation. We ask this as children, your children, confident in your goodness and love in the name of your Son Jesus, whose birth we celebrate. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again.
Thank you, Megan.
And now, if you're able, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Reeser.
Second.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Reeser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know he is excused. All right. Two good things right now. I'll have the chief come on up. We are going to have a lifesaving award for Officer Demacher, as well as we are going to do a swearing in for our Officer Phil Garcia. So, welcome, Chief.
Thank you. If I could have Officer Debacker come forward to the podium. So, our officers on a daily basis do a lot of great work, but at this time, I'd like to recognize extraordinary police work. On Thursday, November 20th, 2023, approximately 1:00 a.m., Officer Tyler Debacker responded to a 911 call from a frantic mother reporting that her eight-month-old infant was choking and bleeding from the mouth. Officer Debacker arrived and found the infant on the floor, discolored with blood on his mouth. Officer Debacker picked the infant up and began administering several backslaps, and upon checking the mouth for obstruction, located a plastic bottle cap from the back of the infant's mouth and was able to remove it. The infant then began breathing normally. Officer Debacker's actions illustrate the importance of a quick response. He was the first on scene, arriving well before dispatched medical responders, and was able to save this infant's life. Letters from Touche's personnel support that Officer Tyler Debacker's actions saved this infant's life. The South Haven Police Department therefore gratefully acknowledges Officer Tyler Debacker with a lifesaving ribbon and uniform bar. And then Megan is going to do his official swearing in for us.
All right, and I will have you raise your right hand, and then you'll just say, "I do," or "I will." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Police Officer of the City of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability? Wonderful.
So, I would just like to say, we are extremely fortunate to have Officer Garcia join our force. As you've all heard, it is extremely difficult to find top-notch qualified officers, so we are truly blessed to have him join us. He's got many of his family members here in the front row, so we'd like to give them a big hand, because without support in this profession, it can be difficult. So, we want to give a big round of applause for Officer Garcia's family. So, Officer Garcia graduated from the Kalamazoo Valley Community College Police Academy. He worked for the Bangor Police Department for almost two years during that time. He had received several lifesaving awards, a Medal of Valor. He's got great experience there. So, we, like I said, we are very fortunate to have Officer Garcia join our department. He is in his first phase of field training here and excelling very well. So, we're very fortunate and very happy to have him onboard.
And welcome. So, thank you. All right, and this is your time to grab your family and sneak right out. You are more than welcome to.
Welcome and thank you.
Yeah, again, thank you, Tyler. Welcome. Thank you, everybody. All right, next, we've just got a quick proclamation for Pastor Steve Smolligan. So, if you would like to come on up, you can bring your support network, bring anybody you want up there. You've got a cast of supporting characters, come on up. Which is great. I'm glad you're here, so welcome. And this is well deserved. So, I'm going to read a little bit. And again, just, I want to thank you personally for your support from day one, your willingness to, you know, suggestions, guidance, bounce ideas, many times just call up and make sure, you know, you're a great litmus test. So, I appreciate your willingness, your caring, you know, just always amazing. And of course, you know, Worship on the River Front, that's you, and I hope, you know, you worked with us so many different times from six to three, and I hope you go back to six, I'm just saying. So, I can't say enough, just, so the community's fortunate to have you here. I'll start, got George helping me. Whereas Steve Smolligan is the senior pastor at Hope Church in South Haven, he is passionate for Christ and his church and for leaders and their growth and development. Whereas Pastor Smolligan's ministry has taken him all around the world, including Holland, Michigan, Luksek, Washington, and St. Andrew's, Scotland. Whereas Pastor Smolligan holds a doctorate degree from Asbury Seminary in the field of church leadership, and spent 16 years in a denominational position where he was responsible for the general oversight of shared life of 30-plus churches, and...
Whereas Pastor Smolligan has been an active member of the community since moving to South Haven, he regularly provides the invocation at city council meetings, helps to coordinate the annual ceremony for the National Day of Prayer, was instrumental in starting the Worship on the River Walk, provides leadership to the South Haven Area Ministerials Alliance, SHAMA, and is a member of the We Care Community Resource Board. And whereas Pastor Smolligan helped Hope Church celebrate its 150th anniversary in 2022, and whereas Pastor Smolligan met his wife Brenda as counselors at Camp Geneva in Holland, Michigan, they have been married for 38 years and have four adult daughters and five grandchildren. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Pastor Steve Smolligan and express appreciation for his ongoing service to the community. Your inspiring leadership, faith, and contributions to the community have helped make it a better place to live, work, and play. Assigned Mayor Scott Smith.
Take care. Thank you. I'm coming down to give you a...
Thank you.
Well, Eric, this is an honor. I... What can I say? I'll leave it at that. Thanks, everybody. So, gee, I get to call out my name and then your name. So, we get a proclamation for myself and for my outstanding council member, Mr. Steve Schlock. Welcome, Eric Nesbit. Thank you. This is an honor. Thanks for coming out on this beautiful night to do this.
Well, I hope you understand why I was a few minutes late.
You were fine.
I thought normally I'd be 10 minutes early with the time I left, but...
It's an honor, so thank you for coming out.
Well, I appreciate being able to make it here today, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for all of your service. You know how contentious local government can get at times and how light of a crowd this is compared to how it is at times. And I just wanted to personally come out and say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thanks for your work. We have two folks that are retiring from the council, and one, Scott Smith, our mayor, and thank you. If you don't mind, I'll read the proclamation.
You do.
State of Michigan, special tribute to Scott Smith, retirement from the South Haven City Council. Let it be known that it's a great honor to recognize Scott Smith for his six years of service as mayor. Goes by quick, doesn't it?
It does go by quick, huh? Kind of amazing.
The City of South Haven. Mr. Smith was elected mayor in 2017, reelected in 19, reelected in 2021. Prior to his tenure as mayor, Mr. Smith represented Ward One in the city council from 2002 to 2009, and again from 2016 to 2017. And we're sincerely grateful for his contribution to the council and community over the years. Mayor Smith was consistently a friendly face in the community. I know better than others that he's all over the place, and so thank you. It takes a lot of time and effort. Spending countless hours listening to residents, visiting businesses, and advocating for the South Haven community. Mayor Smith was an advocate for local businesses, making economic development a priority. Notably, he spearheaded the adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and recruitment of the Marina while champion expansion of many local businesses, including Riviere, Spencer Manufacturing, and WR Grace. Under Mayor Smith's leadership, the City of South Haven has invested in a new electric substation on 12th Avenue, constructed a splash pad, and new playground at Kids Corner Park. And I think I was at the grand opening of the splash pad, so approved redevelopment project was named the first pure Michigan trail town in Moore. Mayor Smith will take his memories of the difficult tasks that fell to him during his tenure, including those associated with the unforeseen high water levels and the COVID-19 pandemic. I think I was, before everything was shut down, I was doing, I think we were out to the water treatment center the Friday before, and so we were, I think we were, you know, elbow bumping or something. With all this that he has given to the people of South Haven, he can also take a great deal of personal pride and satisfaction with the job well done. And special tribute, therefore, I'll wish to recognize Scott Smith and express appreciation for his service to the City of South Haven. His contributions to the community have helped to make this a better place. This is signed by myself, your state senator, Joey Andrews, state representative, and Governor Whitmer, and the lieutenant governor in the 102nd Legislature. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll come you back.
Pretend like you like the... One last time. Your last meeting, huh?
Exactly. Kind of scary.
Thank you.
We have one more retirement, so Steve, I have a special tribute for you from the State of Michigan for your eight years of service on the South Haven City Council. You were elected in 15 and was reelected in 19. So, you have a little longer terms than the mayor does. Is that, is that good or bad? That's for you to figure out. But Mr. Schleck is a longtime resident and business owner in South Haven, a strong advocate for the waterfront and local maritime industry, serving on the Harbor Commission prior to being elected to the city council and continuing to serve during his tenure on the city council. His leadership was instrumental to many projects to improve the South Haven beaches and marina facilities, including the construction of the Black River Park Fish Cleaning Station and the renovation of North Marina. Furthermore, the city has invested in the new electric substation, constructed the new splash pad, playground, and he's helped facilitate a number of the businesses that we've seen come here to South Haven. He will take with him many memories of his difficult tasks and all the work that he's done. And so, in special tribute, therefore, we wish to recognize Steve and express our appreciation for his service to the City of South Haven. And again, it's seen by myself, your state senator, state representative, Joey Andrews, and the governor and lieutenant governor of 102nd Legislature. And so, just, again, what I said at the beginning is, you guys are on the front lines, and whether the decisions you make can either make a community go forward and grow and prosper, or the decisions you guys make can make it go backwards. And I know it's something, we're here in the City of South Haven, you guys have had quite a few years of good success of reinvesting here in the community, going after all those grants that you guys, you know, have been able to go after over the last several years, and you've seen those benefits here downtown and around the community. And so, thank you for your service and your continued service, and for those that step up, you know, beside you and after you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, I appreciate you guys. Yes, absolutely.
Now, I'm going to give you a quick shout-out. I will say, in all my time as an elected official, you have been by far a number one as far as picking up the phone, returning phone calls, and getting things done. Period, end of story. I got your phone, it amazed you. You answer it, you pick it up, you send resources, you've helped. So, if you run for governor someday, sign me up. So, I'm just saying. So, just twist your arm, but you'd be great. So, I'll leave that. So, thank you. I know if you guys got to go and have a night and the weather's terrible, we understand, but we appreciate your coming, so...
I'm going to be gone tomorrow night, so I'm going to probably try to put Catherine to bed tonight.
Yeah, I do, seriously, but thank you. We appreciate your coming in, and on behalf of the city for your...
That's on finding a new police officer. That's always a tough challenge, finding a qualified one. My cousin got his start in Bangor, so I guess Bangor's a good, now he's in the sheriff's department, but I guess Bangor's a good proving ground, so thank you.
Well, the community's fortunate to have you, the state's fortunate, so Eric, thank you, appreciate it. Happy holidays. What was that? No, Gail's not going to be here tonight. All right, so that takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know it's approved. Next, we have public comment for items on the agenda, which are excluding ones that are scheduled for a public hearing, which there is one tonight. That's the Midary item. So, if you'd like to talk about something on the agenda other than the Midary item, please come on up, state your name and address, and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Good evening, Clark.
Clark Gruber, 305 Erie Street. I just wanted to come, because I guess this is the time, because you've got a proclamation, you're on the agenda, so I can't speak later about you...
That's fair. You can go early. Get out of here.
Yeah, that would be wrong, so I just want to say what a pleasure it was to serve with both Scott and Steve over the years, to sit next to you and to be your number two while mayor was an honor. Both you guys were prepared, and I want to say this about Steve, is if Steve came to a meeting, he not only read everything, he had questions, he had answers, and he was always a number one. So, I think the ward is going to miss your excellent representation. You did that well. And Scott, you're always a forward thinker, and that, we've seen that in the last six years, and I'm sure behind the scenes we'll continue to see that, and I think Annie is prepared to continue to do additional good work, because I think we're all dressed in red tonight, so thank you.
Great minds think alike. Thank you, appreciate all that you've done and continue to do. Thanks for your work on the PC. Anybody else? Go in once, go in twice. Good evening, Andy Brown. Good evening, Jew.
114 Michigan Avenue. I would go through any weather to thank you, Scott, and Steve for all your service. So, I'm just here to thank you. I've heard rumors that being mayor is a thankless job, but I want to thank both of you. So, you've both worked tirelessly on building our community and really making South Haven the best place to live, and you've built bridges and calmed storms, so you're both leaving big shoes to fill. So, and I will look forward to working with you, Scott, next year, and continue working within economic development and asking you questions. But you've both done a great job of representing and working hard, so thank you so much.
Thank you much, appreciate it. And it is fun, really, so... Good evening. You're up here next time, too. Look at all these new people. Welcome, you'll be switching roles next time.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I look forward to representing Ward Three coming in January, but I do have something with regard to item 18. I provided it by email. I thought a written copy might be helpful, but before I dive into business, I would like to thank the retiring mayor and Councilman Schlock for the representation and the dedication to the City of South Haven.
Thank you.
For 18, that is for the contract for the legal counsel that was selected at the very short special meeting this past Thursday. And although the staff recommendation is that you should approve the proposed contract, I hope you have had a chance to review it and hopefully align with some of the issues that I have identified in light of some of the questions and comments at that meeting, despite its length. It would be nice to have clarification from the firm about notice when they would increase fees. It was fantastic to see that they were willing to lock in their fees for two years. That was not in their proposal, and that was very beneficial to us. One proposal is 30-day notice, similar to another proposal that had been included and also had capped the two years, capped the fee at two years. It would be very beneficial for financial purposes to have an understanding of what the attorney billable hours would be for travel time to and from city council and meetings. I know that there were some comments during that meeting last week, but the expenses, mileage kind of got morphed with expenses, and it's not very clear from that little exchange exactly what is happening. If that is in the proposal, please identify it, it's not clear. And like one of the other legal firms that had applied, the attorney was not going to be charging for driving time, but if other attorneys were involved, they would be charging one-half of their hourly rate. I do know from Attorney Curcio, he did charge hourly rates. That was, that was very clear from some of the ZBA meetings where there were escrows and that fee was charged to the resident who had appealed a decision and successfully to the ZBA. And Mr. Curcio's fees were assessed totally to that resident, despite him having to be there for an educational seminar to the ZBA. Last but not least is the term, because the city charter, section 4.13, makes legal counsel at will, and section 3A of the proposal gives the city authority to terminate the agreement without cause and without notice. It's a little inconsistent to have it as a five-year term. And the proposal that they had provided actually had a blank space, and it could easily be written just having it start when, at the effective date, and renewed annually. As you can appreciate as businesspeople, that right now is our bargaining time before the agreement is executed. We did an excellent job getting that two-year lock-in fee. That's fantastic. It would be good to have clarity on travel, travel billable hours, because I have to believe that the firm does do that, and it would be very beneficial to do that before the agreement is inked. And I had provided some suggested changes, and the motion to authorize execution could include making those changes happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Was there anybody else? And go in once, go in twice. Sold. Okay. Next, we are at the consent agenda items A through J.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion seen on this as a roll call vote?
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. City council is going to be asked to take the following actions regarding the planned unit development application from Frank and Monica Midary regarding property at 1 North Bailey Avenue. First, we will hold a public hearing, just need a motion to do that.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, open a public hearing. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is open for this application. Update is for you. Is that correct?
Griffin?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to provide a little bit of an overview before we get to the public. So, the applicant is proposing a site condominium on the newly-formed 0.46-acre lot in the B3 Waterfront Business District. As mentioned a little bit at the introduction, I highlight that this is newly-formed because 1 Bailey Avenue and 9 Bailey Avenue were recently combined, and presently, the parcel contains one detached, single-family cottage and the existing Midary Marina. When the applicants approached the City of South Haven with the intent of creating the site condominium that's before you all this evening, it was shared that a mixed-juice PUD was the permissible pathway to accomplish this type of development at that location. The applicants intend to build three new dwelling units on the property and are seeking waivers ranging from front yard setback, building height, specifically the story limitation, curb cuts, sidewalk requirements, as well as for exceeding the maximum number of dwelling units on the parcel, because it's less than 0.5 acres in size. The Planning Commission conducted the preliminary review of this application on June 1, and final review with the required public hearing on November 2. The Planning Commission ultimately voted 8 to 0, with one member being absent to recommend the item to the city council, with the conditions noted in the staff report, as well as an additional condition of installing a buffer on the boundary. of installing a buffer on the boundary with the neighbor at 15 North Bailey. There's quite a bit of material included in the packet. This is the same material that's brought before you all two weeks ago. I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions, and we'll just highlight that we do have the applicant here this evening, and I know they're also willing to address any questions or concerns you all may have.
Sounds good. This is a public hearing portion of the meeting, so if anybody has any questions, this would be the time to come on up and state your name, address, and let us know. One, two, three. Sold. All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know it is closed. Next, city council is going to be asked to consider the approval of the planned unit development application from Frank and Monica Mid-Aderry regarding the property at 1 North Bailey Avenue with the conditions recommended by the planning commission on November the 2nd, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the planned unit development application for Frank and Monica Mid-Aderry regarding property at 1 North Bailey Avenue. The conditions recommended by the planning commission on November 2nd, 2023.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Questions, comments, discussion?
Just a question. Do we still mail out notice to the neighbors, surrounding neighbors with the PUD?
For the, for the required public hearing that was before the planning commission, notices were mailed.
They did get notices. Okay.
Not, not for the one before city council, because this is a, an additional public hearing that we've done traditionally. The required public hearing, as required by the ordinance, is the one before the planning commission.
Back last summer, they would have gotten notices.
This summer, yes.
Yeah, it would have been for the November planning commission meeting.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I'll just thank you to Frank and Monica for coming to the last meeting, coming to this meeting, being willing to answer questions. I know, working with staff, and obviously for your investment in the property and bringing it up like you are. So, looks like we've got support. We've got a motion and a second to approve the PUD application from Frank and Monica Mid-Aderry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know it is approved. Thank you. Good luck, and get to work.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you all. That takes us to new business. City council is going to be asked to consider the approval of resolution 2023-36, which is a resolution to support the Great Lakes Coalition and their efforts in creating a statewide strategy for beach nourishment, protection of public infrastructure, and the natural environment.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-36, a resolution to support the Great Lakes Coalition and their efforts to create a statewide strategy for beach nourishment, protection of public infrastructure, and natural environment.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Guess I could speak to it. Jim sits down as well. I actually sit on this board as well, as part of, Mr. Hettinger encouraged me, and basically as a city representative. So, part of the strategy this group is really trying to do is get the state to accept the fact that there may be a better alternative to putting down rock and steel walls to returning our shorelines. Michigan is basically the only state that doesn't have a strategy for shoreline preservation, and we know that we've got a ton of, you know, missing beach in our, you know, along, especially on Lake Michigan shoreline. Harbors stop the normal flow of sand, so if you've ever been on the south side of town, pretty much there's very little, if any, private beach any longer past the public beach. So that's, just in the time I've been in town, that's been a pretty big change. So, part of the strategy is to look at where the sand goes, how to get that sand back. If you go to Florida, the Carolinas, anywhere, they're bringing sand back. They're reclaiming it, bringing it back. And that's one of the pushes of this organization, as well as just understanding how beach, how beaches should be maintained in general, what happens with pier structures, a lot of different things. So, long-term, they're also looking at who's controlling the lake flows between Lake Superior, Lake Michigan, and they're trying to look at that regulation. So there's a couple different things going on. So that's the push.
We should have kept Mr. Nesbit here a little longer and twist his arm.
He's aware. He's aware, and very helpful. And most, I will say, most of the shore, and I'll give Joe Andrews credit. He's done a nice job of kind of jumping on this and getting behind it. So I think there's, part of it's just kind of a lack of awareness. I think a lot of people, if you're in Lansing, you just assume with the lake, there's a beach, and they're unaware of what's happening along these shorelines. And then, you know, we sent, we could send them pictures of our, you know, infrastructure underwater. And even that's one of those things that, again, we sort of, we forget over time. If it's not underwater, they're not thinking about it. But the beaches are very not well-understood. I will just say that. So, the goal would be to, what would it take to have ongoing beach nourishment from coast to coast?
Kind of ties into beach safety in that if you're not from here, you don't understand how the beaches work, and how dangerous they can be.
I would, I would agree. It's very similar. So, but anyway, so it's, nothing's going to happen anytime soon. This is probably decades in the future to see anything ever happen. I'm just trying to be realistic here. But the hope is that there's an awareness, and maybe over time, we can see some, you know, state push to get these beaches restored. That's what we got. All right, questions, comments, otherwise? This is just to basically a resolution to offer support. So, all in favor of supporting resolution 2023-36, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, we will support. Thank you. Next, city council will be asked to approve a professional services agreement extension with Alvan Humane Society to continue stray animal services within the city of South Haven for an additional five years.
I'll make a motion to approve professional services agreement with the Alvan Humane Society to continue stray animals, animal services within the city of South Haven for an additional five years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second with a great big thank you at the end of that to support Alvan.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. So, Alvan, we've had this agreement for some times. The city did make a contribution to Alvan prior to this agreement, but we added more and increased that contribution to allow for the, the police department to lodge stray animals and, and take care of that. And we've seen the last couple of years is that that's been a very successful relationship, so we're looking to renew that for another five years with an increase of, per year of 5%. In talking with the executive director and with Chief Thompson, we have not been lodging as many animals as we had thought, so it seems to be a good balance for right now, and it seems to be a very good relationship.
Excellent. And again, very appreciative. I know all of us up here very appreciative of everything they do. So, any questions or comments on this one?
I was just gonna say, it'd be kind of nice if they were willing to come in and give any kind of update yearly or what have you. It'd be nice to hear from them, the scope of what they're doing and how that relates to what we do here, too.
Okay, absolutely. I'll, you can reach out. Thank you.
They could bring puppies, too.
That's right, bring puppies to adopt. Bring them on the show.
And just play with.
Right?
On our stressful meetings.
Let's do it. It's a good idea. I like it. All right, there's no other questions or comments. We have motion second to approve resolution, oh, no, sorry, approve a professional services agreement, extension with Alvan Humane Society. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know it is approved. Next, city council is going to be asked to adopt resolution 2023-37, which is a resolution recommending that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission grant Clementine's Saloon a social district permit for use at 500 Phoenix Street, which is within the South Haven Social District.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-37, a resolution recommending that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission grant Clementine's Saloon a social district permit.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Griffin, another one.
Yes, thank you. Now that the South Haven Social District is up and running, there are some other local businesses that have expressed some interest. One of those businesses being Clementine's. They have now, and you have before you, the application materials necessary to submit to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And as you all are very aware at this point with doing a handful of these, the first step is to get a recommendation from the local governing body, which in this case is, is the city council. So, before you all, the completed social district permit application from Clementine's, a copy of their existing MLCC permit, certificate of liability insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, as well as a signed copy of the South Haven Social District Participation Agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. It might be worth noting that it was shared with us that Clementine's has interest in, in obtaining their social district permit in time for the New Year's celebration. I have shared with them that that is unlikely, not due to our inability to, to move forward, but it's just the time it takes to work through some of the state agencies. So I, I've encouraged them that, you know, if we can get a recommendation from council, a better goal is to aim for more like icebreakers at the end of January and early February, because we're looking at several weeks' time to get this through the state.
Yeah. I think we've been pretty open about that. I think we were surprised. We have this now ads Kitchen 527.
Taste.
Taste.
Hot.
New Holland.
And Gravity Winery.
So that's.
Or before that we have, yes.
Good. So, and again, just that it's, the holdup won't be here. We submit, and what's, do we, do we have a rough, how long does it take in to get through? Is it four, six weeks? Have you seen any consistency?
Um, I think it's faster than the original three-month timeline we were given. I think when a lot of communities were kind of just getting these going, but to my knowledge, we're still in the several-week range.
Yeah.
There's, there's an inspection that's required as part of the state's approval process, so getting that scheduled is going to be between the state and the, the local business.
Okay. Well, we've, hopefully, if they're not getting this.
But we will do our part as quickly as we can.
Yeah, it's a process. So, good. Thank you. Well, thanks for doing the work, and all that's worked to get it done, and hopefully, those that are doing it will have success and.
We're excited to have local businesses wanting to participate.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions, comments?
It's a little bit more general, but since you brought up New Year's Eve, will you remind us what the timeframe is for the social district on New Year's?
8:00 p.m.
Yeah, noon to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good question. Anything else? All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-37 recommending to the Michigan Control, Liquor Control Commission to grant Clementine's Saloon a social district permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, it's approved. Thanks, Griffin. Next, city council is going to be asked to approve a one-year commercial use license agreement for the following entities, My Barefoot Wedding, Bend Yoga, and Sincerely K&amp;J.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-year commercial use license agreement with My Barefoot Wedding, Bend Yoga, and Sincerely K&amp;J.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Kate?
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. These are a continuation of the commercial uses that we have had in the past. We've had the wedding vendor, as well as the yoga vendor, which I know George takes advantage of, and of course, Sincerely K&amp;J, which offers picnics. So these will be a renewal of the terms in the same places, the same times. I know that we have moved the Bend, Bend Yoga round a little bit, but they are going to be in their same spot, which is the south end of the north beach, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sunday mornings between 7:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. The My Barefoot Weddings will also be located in the south end of the north beach. And then K&amp;J, beach, beach picnics will be utilizing the southern end of Packard Park. All those terms stay the same. They will be increased 5% like we've done with most of our contracts for 2024. I have not received any complaints about either, any of the three vendors.
And I would just, I know when we got, when we had these agreements with three, these three people, and it's good to hear, no complaints, that from there, we started hearing from the public, they didn't want to hear anymore. So I just want to reiterate that these are just renewals, not an expansion of any commercial, other commercial use of the beaches.
That's correct. These are renewals of what has been established so far, and as it's been apparent, because the council doesn't want to see too many more of these, we have all that we have renewed from last year.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't heard much. I must have been, other than at those initial meetings. So for me, it's kind of been quiet. I know others, but I haven't heard anything. So, which is encouraging. So, well done. All right, if there are no other questions or comment, we have a motion and a second to approve the commercial use license agreements as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, they're approved. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. All right, next, city council is going to be asked to approve the proposed contract with Bloom and Sluggett for General Legal Services and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Bloom and Sluggett for General Legal Services and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Kate, I'm going to throw in some questions I asked earlier, if we can clarify what you can, and then.
I would. They were able to lock in that two-year confirmation of rates, similar to one of the other vendor, one of the other firms. They also would, you know, give us notice, 30 days notice, similar to another vendor, that the rates, if the rates were going to be changing. I did clarify on the travel time, because it said in their proposal it was only talk about mileage. Similar to most agreements, they were looking at some travel time, but they've reduced it to a half hour. So only one way, they would only try, charge us one way. So I know that was a concern that had been brought up as travel time, so they would be only charging their time here, to come here. I know one of the questions that had been, you know, if they're coming to court. This is for General Legal Services, so they're not doing ordinance prosecution. We would not, they would not be going to court for us. We have another attorney that handles ordinance prosecution.
Right. We have Manning for that, so that's, okay.
Was there travel time at the full rate, or?
Yes, it is the full rate of that, that attorney's hour time. And I should say that all the other attorneys had that. I know that one of them who lived locally was not going to charge that, but all the other members of the firm would be charging that as well, and that was $25 more than this, than this firm.
I know the hourly rate was less, obviously, with this firm, and then, I mean, I don't know.
What's that?
I was saying, wasn't it 225?
The firm that we're proposing is 225. I think one of the other ones that was looked at at our special meeting was 250 an hour.
That's it. Yeah. Questions, comments? Are you good? No, call the question. Very good, there you go. Okay. Well, I think most of us had a question answered before. There's no other questions or comments. We've got a motion and a second to approve the proposed contract with Bloom and Sluggett as written. Let's roll call it.
Absolutely. Sorry. Okay. Onuki?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And next, city council is going to ask, he has to receive the year-end update presentation from Ms. Kate Hozier.
That's right.
It's the end of the year.
It is the end of the year. And of course, I started this just a little bit late. I got too wrapped up in my next, my next thing. So, we have our screen coming on. I apologize. It's just a little dark here, but we will get this going. We have two presentations for you, and typically, we did split them apart and have DPW first, but we did have kind of a doozy of an agenda last time, so that would be a little unfair to add on that presentation. So, what we do have for you today is our presentations for the end of the year. And now, we like to do these almost as a calendar year, so it kind of breaks along two fiscal years. So with that being said, let's kind of jump into some of these. We'll first do, let me see if I can get this to work here. The first part, we'll be talking about some priorities, as well as going into some departments. And, and then we'll follow up with DPW, because they have so many departments over there, and they've been taking a lot of pictures. We'll have them jump in after we get through this first presentation. All right. So our first presentation goes into some of our priorities, and our first priority was short-term rentals. We held quite a few workshops this year. We also did a number of items relating to addressing some of the concerns. As we all know, we've looked at some ordinance language that'll be carried over into the next fiscal year, but we're still in the same fiscal year, but this is a priority. So, we had a number of workshops. The 24/7 hotline went live as of December 1. We facilitated discussions with council on next steps, looking to see what needs to change, where are the concerns at. We've also done some administrative improvements, such as we've hired part-time staff person to help with the renewals, as well as code enforcement. We've updated our forums. We've updated our Good Neighbor Guide, and we've updated website information. Our, our second priority was infrastructure. We've gotten quite a bit done between road projects, which aren't on here, but are in part of another presentation. We've replaced the window at South Haven Police Department, made it more ADA accessible. The fireplace project, which happened to be a donation, that is most of the way constructed. We, we do have some, some additional items to finish out there, but it is, was briefly turned out and looked very good. Our priority, too, was infrastructure. We've done the Dyckman Park bathrooms and skate warming center, about $450,000. We've gotten some grants. Those are ongoing. Waste water treatment plant, $3 million. The elevated storage tank replacement of lead services, that's $18 million. Lead service line replacement, over $400,000. If you remember, we got some money from the Van Buren County ARPA to, to do those lead line service repairs. Also, we did street and sidewalk repairs as detailed in the DPW year-end presentation. Economic development, we had quite a year for economic development. We've had several of our manufacturing facilities look to expand. Spencer Manufacturing did an expansion of 40,000 square feet, adding 16 new jobs. WR Grace expansion, a $30 million investment with 20 new jobs. W.R. Grace expansion, a thirty-million-dollar investment with twenty new jobs. Uh, we have been in support of the reopening of Palisades Nuclear Power Plant, but also, we've also participated in the community, um, the, the citizen advisory panel, learning to see what the economic impacts are of that, and how to replace that kind of taxable value into the, into the county, as well as how it affects this city. We've also had the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, match on main grants for Farmer's Daughter. We've been very successful with the grant. I think that was our fifth one. Uh, continued economic services, relationships with Market Van Buren and J. Huds or Jim Hettinger. As you can see here, we had the, um, the head of the MEDC, Quentin Messer, came down and visited Revere and, um, Spencer Manufacturing, along with, um, several of the, the MEDC folks. Um, 2023, um, we also had some, some work done on, on housing. We have the development of a joint housing plan with South Haven Township. This council approved the Randy Locker redevelopment of Hales. By the way, that was unanimous vote. That was, that was amazing work right there. And we have that continued relationship with housing next. Um, we have also worked with LMC for marine tech training program. Uh, we just had a lunch and learn last week with industry leaders to trying to figure out, where do we see the gaps? Uh, because we're not necessarily in the marine industry, so trying to figure out what needs to be done with that. Uh, South Haven Regional Business Hub has really gotten its legs on. Um, it has been looking at empowering entrepreneurs, getting them to get business plans, figuring out what are the next steps to not only establish new businesses, but to grow, um, newer businesses. Um, we have the Young Professionals Group, trying to get younger professionals in this area together and to, to network. We sold the Michigan State Police Outpost to Berkshire Hathaway. We also hosted the City of Charlevoix, we're at the Mayor's Exchange. Community cohesiveness was one of our other priorities. We've done a lot with this area, just trying to make sure that we're connecting with the community. Uh, we have beach safety, which will be on another presentation slide. We had our council meeting in the park this, uh, Sep- uh, September. Uh, we did our equity assessment, our DEI workshops. The equity assessment has been approved by this, by this board. We had our national night out, which was, uh, working with other agencies around the county. We did have our PFAS meeting with the State of Michigan at the high school. We did shop with the cop, uh, with, uh, this will be, I think, our, uh, we've been doing this since 2017. Those will be in another presentation. We've had speaking engagements with Ward One Action Committee, um, the Kiwanis and Rotary Clubs. We also did our Touch a Truck event, which many of you may have come out for, and that was pretty nicely done. With our community cohesiveness, we've kind of stepped up and seen where we've been, trying to improve our, our communication with the public. Our emails from staff, as you can see, uh, went up quite a bit. Uh, in 2022, we had 147,000 emails going out, and this year, we had 168,000. Our number of press releases went from last year's sixty-nine to eighty-four. Um, our city manager's blog is forty-one, that's year-to-date, press releases. Uh, the other thing that I should say about press releases is that, and this is a comment I received from the public, is that it was very hard to kind of find the latest press release. So what we did is we introduced a naming protocol. So the very first, um, press release, or the press release for that day is right on top. So the most recent is right on top. Um, our NICS alerts, um, are four hundred and twenty-three for the year. Uh, that includes three hundred and ten for the beaches and one hundred and thirteen for public works. Social media, uh, we pretty much use Facebook, so we've seen a number of posts. A forty-one percent increase from 2022. So we've had a hundred and thirty-five posts on, uh, Facebook. Our reach has been a hundred and twenty-six thousand users. And the Facebook followers we have is over five thousand. And this is our Touch a Truck, um, slide. If you came out, were able to, to come out there, we had a lot of departments representing. We had wastewater, we had the electric department. The city clerk was out there getting everyone to vote for their favorite, um, display. IT was showing folks on how to conduct a meeting. And then we also had the police department giving away a number of items. So that, a slide on the very upper left, that was a number of our crew who came out and participated. So very, many thanks to city staff who got this together. It's amazing working with this group of people.
I think Richie was trying to get himself on a calendar.
I think so, I think so.
Just, well, I don't know.
Um, for the number twenty-four, uh, for the fourth community cohesiveness, it's also really important to know that your staff are in your community. We work here, we, many of us are, live here, but we're part of the community. Uh, many of us, uh, volunteer at many of these organizations. Alvan Humane Society, the National Blueberry Festival, Chamber of Commerce, the Elks Club, the Kiwanis Club, Moose Lodge, Our Town Players, Rotary of South Haven, South Haven Project Pathway, South Haven Public Schools Robotics Club, the sports clubs, um, the South Haven Covert Community Foundation, South Haven Township Planning Commission, and Women Who Care. So we can see that Megan is part of, of the volunteer for Alvan, Jared Knapp, our IT, and Kim Wise, mentor of the robotics team. Aaron Preeb and Mayor Scott Smith and Griffin Graham, we're all at the Arbor Day, uh, tree planting. And Jeremy Hyatt, who happens to be our superintendent at the wastewater plant, uh, serves as a football coach for, for the Rams, uh, football team, so go Rams. Um, let's get to some of these department updates. The building department, we've got a number of the permits that were issued this year. Um, so we've got these permits, then we have also, uh, some more permits on this slide. And it's really important to note that from this year, uh, from last year to this year, we have seen an increase in the total number of permits issued, as well as the fees collected. Uh, we've roughly had about fifty more permits, uh, this year, and about forty thousand dollars more in revenue. This is largely related to the increase in commercial and industrial projects. As you can tell from the economic development slide, we've seen a lot of expansion in those. And those are going to have an impact on those permits and those permit revenues. The fee schedule also implemented in late 2022 did also help with that. We've, uh, as we saw earlier, we did give an update earlier this year about code enforcement actions. A hundred and fifty-two municipal civil infractions, that's for regulatory code, building and zoning. And we've got those, that breakdown there. Uh, we've issued three stop work orders, two unauthorized building fees. We've taken, um, uh, three complaints to court for property maintenance, as well as a hundred and sixty-five other contacts, warning letters, friendly notice letters. Remember, there's like a three-step process before any, I'm sorry, one thousand six hundred and fifty-five. So that's a number, thank you, Steve. There's a number of contacts that we do before a ticket is even written. And this kind of breaks down our STR code enforcement actions. Again, we also gave an update, um, in mid-November about this, but this is as of 11:30. Here are our numbers. Documented warnings, municipal civil infractions issued, complaints unfounded in the total. So one hundred and ninety-six total of those categories listed here. Um, this also breaks down our enforcement by category. It may be a little hard to see, but if you are reading along or see this presentation, it's pretty easy to read. Um, a majority of these are going to see STR certificate not posted, STR unregistered, STR other, STR personal rented more than allowed, STR advertising higher than occupancy, STR letter unregistered, and STR exceeding maximum occupancy. Um, the city clerk is next. The projects and accomplishments, what we have here is about forty people come to work on Election Day. And this year, as you know, we've, we've had some changes in the election law. So I know that Megan has been working with, uh, the county clerk and other municipal clerks to establish an early voting site, and working through the changes from Prop Two from 2022 as to what that's going to look like. Of course, a lot of that's going to be looking forward to next year, when those changes really going to affect. Megan has completed her second year of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks next, this, is it next March? She'll be doing her third year. Um, we have implemented an online FOIA request center through Granicus. Granicus is also, uh, operates our short-term rental hotline and also operates our online meetings. So that's a vendor that we already use. Also worked at community outreach with Young Professionals, Chamber of Commerce, uh, National Blueberry Festival Board, Women Who Care, and then she has joined the Alvan Humane Society Board. This is our number of FOIs over the last couple of years, trending downward, which is nice to see. Uh, but it does help with having that online, um, software to help kind of keep, keep going through the process. Um, we had here our August primary election and our November general election. This is our voter turnout, um, for the August and the November primary. And as you can see, uh, citywide for the August, we had a hundred and twenty, I'm sorry, one thousand two hundred and twenty-six voters out of three thousand seven hundred and four voters, uh, come out to vote. In the November general election, we had one thousand five hundred and nineteen voters out of three thousand seven hundred and nine who came out to vote. Absentee vote, voting has been up, um, yeah, was that twenty-twenty? So you can see that big spike, and we all kind of know why. And then we've kind of seen some tapering off and some spikes, but nothing as large as twenty. Um, but we have been sending out quite a number of AV ballots. Um, so in the August primary, we sent out seven hundred and eight. In the November general election, uh, eight hundred and forty-eight ballots were sent out. Uh, the amount received also kind of trended, um, uh, with the August primary, received six hundred and twenty-three, and with the November general election, we received seven hundred and sixty-seven. Customer service. Uh, customer service staffs, uh, they handle our, our front desk. They handle a lot of payments coming in. Karen Verdonk has been with us for thirty-three years. Cynthia Meriwether Watson has been with us two years and eight months. And Miranda Correa has been with us one point five years. We take in about forty million dollars in payments, and that's through your utilities, your taxes, and a number of what people pay for. And that's through fifty-one thousand payments processed by this, by the customer service department. And we take payments at the front counter, the night deposit boxes, and in the Daily Mail. Uh, seven hundred new accounts were opened this year. One thousand eight hundred and fifty-six work orders were processed, and two hundred and seventy-five payment planned assistance, uh, were given. Majority of the work that's being done are utility payments. Eighty-five percent of the payments being done are, are taken in our utility payments. Thirteen percent of their work is taxes. Uh, most of our, uh, interactions with customer service staff are actually starting to trend to email. Um, so you can see here, uh, we answered over ten thousand, uh, phone calls, twenty-nine thousand emails, and eleven thousand face-to-face interactions. So we're definitely seeing the digital transactions continuing to outperform the traditional phone and face-to-face transactions. Finance department, this is our funds that are going, uh, expenses by fund. And these are not grouped like we normally do. This is coming out of a, a report that we have to send to the state. And the 2023 numbers are coming from our, um, audit for 2022 to 23, which should be coming, uh, to the council in mid-January, we're hoping. So I do have some notes on that. And these are, this report was required for the city, village, and township revenue sharing. So this is where these numbers are coming from. And, uh, the expenses are a combination of the general funds, um, and non-major governmental funds. And debt service and capital outlay. And the road fund is streets, engineering, and street lighting, as well as major and local streets and street improvements. Recreation, and I think this kind of goes to your question, Steve, when we talked earlier. Recreation culture is a general fund, but it goes to parks, youth and company, library, museums, the capital fund, the ice rink and pavilion fund. It does not cover marinas. In fact, none of these numbers really cover any of our enterprise funds.
Thank you.
So this slide really just kind of mirrors, uh, the, the previous slide, and just kind of shows you a visual breakdown as to where those, that money is going. So twenty-nine percent to police and fire, twenty-four percent to general government, eleven percent to debt, to debt service, then next, capital outlay, roads, then recreational culture, and then the rest. Our expenditures, again, are coming from majority of, um, revenues are coming from taxes, penalties, and interest, property tax, and your local share appropriation from state property. The state governments are, uh, fund is, uh, revenues are going to be state grants, state revenue sharing, your Act 51 payments for streets, your state light, I'm sorry, state trunk line reimbursements and Metro Act payments. Local contributions would be things like your South Haven Township Police Services, your school liaison, uh, payment, various charges for services. And again, this is just a breakdown and allocation by graph as to where those payments are coming in at. So the majority of where the revenues are coming from are fifty-nine percent are from taxes, uh, twelve percent from state government, other revenues, and then licensing permits, charges for service, and then local contributions. Um, we did receive for our twenty-third year, um, the GFOA's, um, annual comprehensive, I'm sorry, the Certificate for Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So we have received that for our twenty-third year in a row. And this is Mayor Smith's most favorite slide.
Absolutely.
This really shows, um, for every dollar received, where does the money go? So the city portion is twenty-five percent, pretty much goes from this line over. And so that's through city operating fund, the narcotics, the city refuse, and the city streets. So of those, twenty-five percent of that dollar is city taxes. The balance of that dollar, starting from this line over, so sixty-seven percent of the taxes collected are going to education. That's the Van Buren ISD, that is the state education tax, that is South Haven Public Schools, and LMC. Between that twenty-five percent and sixty-seven percent, we have a little, I think it's nine percent, that is left for senior services, this, the library, and then the amount that we have to pay to counties for our, for our share. So any questions on that? Okay. And I know Kim wants to talk about her hu- human resources part.
We need to give Kate a little break so she can take a drink of water.
Thank you.
And then that way I can go into my nerdy HR stuff here. So this is one of my favorite graphics. It shows you what we start with when we're looking at candidates, and then what we end up with, with hired, um, personnel. So in 2023, we posted twenty-two positions. And of those twenty-two positions, you might hire multiple people. For example, Marina, we had to hire about twenty-eight people for that one position. So I've heard a couple of people say, well, why is the city hiring so all these new people? Well, of the twenty-two positions we hired in 2023, only four of them were newly created positions. The beach safety and facilities superintendent, our seasonal beach enforcement attendants, since Shays wasn't taking care of that this year. Um, recently, we brought on some ice rink attendants, the city's taking that over this year. And then the part-time, um, short-term rental code enforcement. So last year, we hired eighty people to fill those twenty-two people, or positions in 2023. So if you can see, in 2020, the blue line at the bottom, we started with three hundred and eight candidates, and we hired forty-three people. The yellow line at the top, we started with four hundred and nine candidates that I personally went through and screened. Um, from there, we scheduled, we reached out to two hundred and thirty people to schedule interviews. Of the two hundred and thirty people that we reached out to, a hundred and thirty-two came to the interview. So it's either I got ghosted, or they declined, or, um, and from there, we hired eighty people. Fun little fact there, the stats are showing that the average full-time recruiter, so somebody that only does recruiting, uh, high-volume recruiter can do about sixty to eighty positions per year. You know, if, luckily, a lot of these were very entry-level. So we hired sixty seasonal people last year. Those are pretty entry-level, pretty easy to fill. So right now, we have three open positions, the city engineer. We have a full-time information center clerk that's open right now, which really is disappointing to Chief Thompson and I, because we really liked that candidate that we had there. And we have another police officer position posted for a certain someone who may be retiring next year. Um, we have ninety-six current employees, eighty-six working full-time, and ten, um, employees who are part-time or seasonal. With us taking on the ice rink, we still have a few seasonal staff members. And again, we hired sixty seasonal staff members in 2023. Twenty-nine Marina folks, five bridge tenders, seven parks and cemetery workers, four parking enforcement officers, six beach safety attendants, and nine ice rink attendants. Um, the beach safety attendants, that position was the toughest one to fill last year. Um, so this breaks it down into those twenty-two positions that we had posted last year. And then by, if they were full-time, part-time, seasonal, the ones that are shaded are the ones that are currently open. How many people we had to hire for those positions? So again, ice rink attendants, we had to hire nine people for that, Marina, twenty-nine. You'll see in their short-term, um, rental code enforcement. Um, we actually had to go through the hiring process there twice. We had somebody that started, they worked one day, and then they left. Um, we also had that with another position as well. So eighty people hired in, in total last year. Beyond the recruiting part of it, we did a lot of leadership training and staff training. We rolled out a new learning management system, so staff can do some online training now, which includes some of our annual required training, such as diversity and inclusion, OSHA, sexual harassment prevention, anti-bullying, and our Title VI. Um, last year, we took about four people to the Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance's Summit on Race Inclusion, and this year, we were able to double that. So we took nine people with us this year. So that was fun, having our group go there. We also did a training session for all of the staff on the Maras retirement planning. Um, we had a few folks that did an inclusive employment practice webinar. And of course, we do our annual open enrollment benefit sessions. Some of the projects we had, the seasonal, uh, job fair is a big event that we've been doing the last few years. We had forty-five people come through. The majority of them were hired that day. Created the Standards of Excellence. Uh, we went through the IBEW, which is the DPW staff, their labor negotiations. Our social activities committee, we formed that last year. So we had a couple of events going on. We just had our potluck for staff last week. The public service recognition that we did in May, that was a lot of fun to be able to go out and recognize all the staff. And then the Touch a Truck event. We've also been working with a safety committee that is, um, system-wide. So we have folks from every department come in, and we're working on that together. every department come in, and we're working on that together. In July, I was able to host a whole group of HR directors from West Michigan shoreline, and these are all municipal HR directors, so it was great being able to bounce ideas off of them, what they're doing. We rolled out Employing Navigator, which is a new online benefits portal. And because we have many different systems that don't really talk to one another, I was able to create an HR dashboard using Power BI. So now I have one dashboard where I can look at a lot of different data. And of course, with our DEI projects, we had our equity assessment and workshops with IPS. Again, we did the summit on race and inclusion, the DEI dashboard, and we are adding some EEO and DEI statements to all the job descriptions. And we, the section on DEI added to the city's personnel manual, which came at the last meeting. That's some photos from our public service recognition week. So again, that was a lot of fun, being able to get out to the different departments and recognize staff there. Jeremy Hyatt over at the wastewater treatment plant, he is so proud of the work that they do there. If you get a chance to go out there and visit that, make sure you do. It's amazing.
All right, thank you, Kim. If you want, if you would like a tour out there, I'm sure, pretty sure Jeremy would give you one. He really, really likes his, his job and really takes it seriously, so he's very passionate about his work. Information technology, we respond to one thousand one hundred twenty-nine requests for services. That's a three-point-seven increase over twenty-twenty-two, and this is the number of help desk tickets per different departments. IT, some major accomplishments for them this, this year was they started their IT services for South Haven Charter Township. We conducted two security audits by outside agencies, which validated our conformance with best practices. We were also successful in the off-site broadcast for city council at the Stanley Johnson Park. That takes a lot of work. I know they were out there very early that morning, trying to set up and get everything ready. We also started the, the transition to, to the two-factor authentication. For members going off council, you haven't, haven't, you haven't had to go through that process, but for the rest of us, it is now a part of our daily living with the City of South Haven's email. It's one of the ways that we do to keep our cyber security well and in check. As we know, if you read the news, there's a lot of organizations that are subject to that, and we're trying to keep up on that. I should say, subject to attacks. Arenas, we have some staff transition. We had Tyler Wilson come in as the Marina manager. We've also recently hired Kelsey Martin as the Marina Office Assistant. We had special events down there, like the Steel Hunters Pro-Am Tournament. And we repainted the south and west wall here at the South Marina, that is the picture that's being shown here. We have improved, improved the landscaping at the North Marina, and implemented a new tiered transient rate that's scheduled for twenty-twenty-four. We are trying to move to our paperless office environment and transition seasonal slip agreements to an online system. The police department, as you can see, we're always trying to make sure that we have enough officers here on the road. We have nineteen officers, nine of which are road patrol, four sergeants, four detectives, some are plainclothes and some are in part of our narcotics units with the county. We have one administrative and one information technology staff. We have eleven support staff, one IC supervisor, four full-time information clerks, three paid-on-call information clerks, and three crossing guards. Our calls for service for the police department are down from last year. Last year, we had over six thousand calls for service. This year, we're a little over four thousand. For the police department, our citations, however, are up. Last year, we were at one thousand six hundred complaints and warnings. This year, we're over two thousand two hundred complaints and warnings. The actual number of complaints taken were two thousand. We have, and that's slightly down from last year, which was two thousand one hundred thirty-five. I should say, I think I misspoke. That's citations and warnings, not complaints. So that citations were two thousand two hundred and fifty-five for the year, here to date. Police Department Unit Awards, very nice to give the award to Officer DeBacher for his lifesaving award. We actually had some other awards given this year. Sergeant Adam DeBoer graduated from the School of Police Staff and Command Executive Leadership Program. Officer Janeri Melendez received his lifesaving award for administering CPR to a patient prior to the arrival of Shays' personnel. And at the bottom, we have Officer Melendez, Sergeant, Sergeant Carlato, Officer Wildy, Officer Mersman, Officer Carnes, and Detective Myers, who is not pictured, who are all recognized for their work during an armed robbery that occurred at Wolverine Hardware this year. Not pictured was Officer Tyler DeBacher, but he was here today to receive his lifesaving award. So congratulations to those folks for their good works. And just last Wednesday, we did Shop with a Cop, and we partnered with Meyer for this event. As I said, we've been doing this since twenty-seventeen, and it's a really wonderful event where children in need are kind of selected by the high, from the schools, and they are taken with, to, they are taken to go shopping and have lunch with the, with the officers. We had a fair number of our, our officers, including Santa's little elf, who might be sitting in the back of the room, to come out and help facilitate that. We had some really nice pictures. We have Officer Kinizowski right down to the left. We have a large group of us right there in front of the Southern Police Department, and then different pictures of kids enjoying their, their pizza, Officer Riker, and then of course, some shopping. Shays have seen increased calls for service every year since two thousand twenty. The total calls for service in twenty-twenty was over two thousand three hundred. The calls for service in twenty-one were two thousand, over two thousand five hundred. In twenty-twenty-two, it was two thousand six hundred, and this year, we're anticipating the, the number of calls for service to be two thousand seven hundred and possibly above. So you can see that we're just increasing that in ambulance calls and/or fire calls. Shays' response, we have an organization that has fifteen career firefighter paramedics, two career firefighter EMT basics, and twenty-five paid-on-call members that respond directly to a scene when called. Shays' response with, could be up to seventeen pieces of apparatus in the course of ninety-seven square miles, providing fire suppression and advanced life support EMS transport to the City of South Haven Geneva Township, Casco Township, and the, in South Haven Charter Township. The average response time to the City of South Haven is three minutes fifty seconds. We, Shays does really continue, does enjoy the continued support of the South Haven City and the other townships that they serve. They also conduct inspections. So Shays' inspection crew performed the following services in the city. So they did a hundred and forty-five fire pre-plans, two-hundred-and-one fire code inspections, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine STR inspections, and eighty food truck and vendor inspections. This is a picture of Brandon Hens, Mayor Smith, and Deputy Chief Fire, Beerhalter, and just thanking Mayor Smith for his six years as service of the, of the Shays' Fire Board. And that's the end of this presentation. So let me just exit out here, and let Quinton up here to get to our next one.
Thank you, Kate. You can see here on the first slide's the organization chart within DPW. There's about fifty full-time staff members and a number of part-time staff members. That includes park staff and bridge tenders.
Oh, may I beg your pardon? Oh, GIS project, oh, it's got a nice little thing here.
So Ryan Bosher is our GIS tech. He's a whiz at what he does. Anytime you see a press release with a map, it's ninety-nine percent of the time Ryan. He puts together all these nice maps for various departments, from TCOs to, to road closures, water main breaks. You've seen some short-term rental maps up there as well. He works a lot with, like I said, every department. You can see here, lead service line inspections, water service material inventory. You could see he keeps a chart, he keeps charts as well as maps. Outages and the causes of outages on the electrical side. There's some more maps that are done by Ryan. He, he works well with the previous director and putting together these nice color-coded maps for the capital improvement projects, for roads and facilities there, among other Recently, DPW had implemented a work order program called IWork, and they, this, Ryan spearheaded this. He worked really closely with them. They actually come through and did a, I guess, like Google Maps does, Street View. So we have an updated street view of our, of all of our streets that any, any of our staff can access. It included a sign inventory, a couple of other nice maps that Ryan made here. He's got a lot of nice maps.
A lot of maps, actually.
Yeah.
I can keep going.
He's amazing.
Yeah.
How scary amazing how good he is.
He's really, really good at what he does. Kind of update here with the street department. You can see here's a breakdown of all the tasks that the street department does, from painting lines to street sweeping. You can see a majority of it there is beach and Marina maintenance. So the street department doesn't just focus on streets. They help out a lot of different things. What, you know, you see special events, tear down and set up. I mean, these guys work around the clock to really make sure the roads are safe, that all of our events are set up properly and safe. And, you know, I think you're all pretty aware of the third of July, the, you know, the massive effort that everybody does, not just the street department, but these, these folks really, I mean, they're some of, you know, the, the bread and butter of DPW. Here's some leaf pickup. This is this year. Added a new sign, but if you see to the back of the, right there, we've added a new sign there to the leaf trucks. It asks, "Don't put sticks in there," it's, it's hard to read, but. Here's a, some beach cleaning. We have a large John Deere tractor we use for that with a pull-behind unit. You can see there's the, the debris and sand that they collect and the tines. That's a, you know, they're out around the clock every day, clean the beaches, so. Here's a sign that, it's actually not in the city limits, but I think this was, from my understanding, this was made from the old water tower. We had a, you know, a resident call and complained that it was taken down and broken, so the street department worked with the Parks Department to repair this. Various sidewalk grinding, also patching. Is there parking lots at the Marina?
This is Black River Park.
Black River Park, yeah, sorry. It's a water and sewer department here. Majority of the work in the water and sewer department's done, water main breaks, as far as time there. We work on a lot of, I'm sorry, mistigs. Water main breaks are one percent. Spend a lot of time marking underground utilities, then, you know, various different branches, meter reads, and, you know, they, they do a lot of re-reads, reading checks, and that also includes some of the meter reader work as well. Couple photos of, there's a water main break over there on Joan Street. What you see there is just a, just a Band-Aid essentially, is a power seal that's used to, to stop the leak from, well, just stop the leak. And then this is a backup on Van Buren Street, caused by some construction debris. Here they repaired a storm, storm manhole.
Was this the one over in South Haven Place?
I believe so, yeah. Yep. Here, we actually contracted for this repair. This is on Washington Street. You can see there's a FernCo that, the repairs on the left, and then this is what it looked like. It's a FernCo there where the, the pipe had just settled and, and the customer was having some backup, so we had gotten contractors out there to repair that for us. This is a sink hole in the ravine behind Pizza Hut. It was just failing storm, and we had, we had actually contracted out as well. Our team worked with Comptons to, to get these repaired, so looks really lovely now. Another thing the water and sewer department do is, you know, they're, they're the guys that spearhead this, this ice rink. So ninety percent of the, the staff members that are, work on this is, is water and sewer, and they, they work around the clock as well while making ice. And they've been working twenty-four hours a day since Friday to keep ice rolling, so on rotating shifts. So there's some of the setup there. This is some sewer manholes that they had rebuilt within, within the city. Previously, we would contract this out, but our, our staff, we've got some pretty skilled guys out there that are more than capable of doing this. So, I mean, it's, this is a big job, it, it's all day, and they, they'll work through, you know, late in the night to get these things finished up and wrapped up for us, and they do a really good job, so this is one of them. Wastewater treatment plant. See if we have council priorities. This is staff cleanup list station, looks like on six-eight-nine. This is water and sewer staff helping them as well. Some pumps that are pulled out. Some fabricating that these guys can do. I mean, the operators, they do a lot of different things, and it's, they're not just water guys or sewer guys, they, they can do a lot, they have a lot of different skills, and you can see here welding's one of them. This is where they have a standby generator here at the golf course list station, which is in Casco. This doesn't have a permanent gen set, so when there's an anticipation of a storm, they'll, they'll bring in a generator for quicker response. Some repairs done there. See on the left, some conduit work. People flush some interesting things. There's a, looks like an Under Armour shirt in a pump, so.
If you came to the touch-a-truck event, this, this was some of the stuff they, they showed that was coming out of the pumps, the cleanout areas.
Yeah, it's real bad. So here's their Asian basin at the wastewater plant. These are fine bubble diffusers. This is what adds oxygen for biological treatment. These, these are essentially PVC with very thin socks on the end of them that create very small bubbles that helps provide the, the bugs with food, and we have to pull them and clean them. Our staff has to pull them and clean them to make sure they're operating properly. So there's some photos of that. Working on finding some INI, so it's info and infiltration of groundwater into the wastewater treatment system, and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty bad. So they're, they're taking a lot of effort in trying to eliminate that, and here's one where they found a manhole that was just below grade, raised it up, sealed it, and that did a good job, so. Parks Department, some tree pruning you could see there, how you couldn't see until they did some trimming and, and, you know, cleared some, some branches out of the way. Again, they worked on repairing the sign, the South Haven sign, installing and removing buoys and, and restickering them, so they're, they're clearly labeled. Clean vandalism, garbage, that's never-ending trash downtown in the various parks and bathrooms. Some edging work, tree planting, and, you know, restoration of the yards and parks. They remove and install all the bikes you see downtown, the bike stations.
More landscaping.
Yeah, just beautiful landscaping all he does. She only works four days, or four hours a week, or four hours a day, and she does all that, that awesome work downtown. They do a lot of sand and, and weeding, sand cleaning and weeding along the River Walk, installing the accessible boardwalks. They work well with the street department at doing this. Air and heads up, beach leveling, you can see the, the before and then after there. Lots of brush cleanup from the parks, laying some mulch there. So I think that was some bathroom, bathroom work that they did at the north, north beach concession.
Yeah, I believe the north side Marina, our north side, north beach bathroom's got new flooring.
Mm-hmm. Some repairs, that's the bridge, that Hubbard Street Bridge.
I thought that was Philbrook Haven, but.
Was it?
I think so.
They do a lot of beautifying throughout the, all the parks, just repairs here again. They maintain our cemetery pretty well, just, you know, they, they raise headstones, they repair headstones, as you can see here. As mentioned earlier, they do a lot of volunteering. This one is planting flags on Veterans Day, Memorial Day at the cemetery.
We had a lot of volunteers come up for that, and it was really nice to see.
Again, Memorial Day. Electric Department. So these guys, you know, they're, they work tireless, tirelessly. Here's an ice storm from earlier in the year. Today, they, they did a lot of work. Wish you had pictures. You know, they, they went and restored four spans of power lines today. It's about, each span's about three hundred feet, just for it, as soon as they got done, another tree fell and ripped, ripped it right down, exactly what they had repaired. So some of this stuff is defeating, but they work through it and to make sure we, our power is restored. There's some failed equipment there, is a bad transformer. Here's the guys installing some underground service. Broken cutouts. Changing some bad transformers. These are things that age out, so. A new pole, and you see where a squirrel got hungry there, damaged some, some underground primary. Here they are installing another pole. They sometimes work with the water and sewer department and use their Vector, where there's utilities nearby, underground utilities, it, it makes it safer for them excavating for a new pole. Staff repairing, it's more wires. There's lightning strike repairs. Down trees on power lines. More bad underground, so it looks like somebody was digging and hit this one. Important to call a mistig for that reason. Some more storm work here. Nice picture of Todd breaking, or fixing a broken neutral from a tree to a home. They also set signs and statues for us as well. Any heavy lifting.
Yep.
Again, some, they put signs up and repair stop, or, uh, streetlights as well. Here's some training. This is top pole rescue, so incapacitated lineman at the top. This is, this is some training they go through annually. It's required by the federal government. These guys are capable of doing these things. So, this is actually in the back at DPW. They are setting a new transformer at the, at school. Some work at the substation there on Phoenix, or the Phoenix substation, rather.
Streetlight repair.
Yep. Some more tree, tree cleanup. They upgraded some lights in Hogan Alley.
We had a truck pole accident on Cartwright. We had detached neutral at the main substation. We had another car pole accident over on Francis Street, which they had to go over there and assist with that.
We're starting to record these more often so we can keep a tally of what's this cost, what's, what it's costing us. This one happened recently, a semi truck that was permitted by MDOT was going around the roundabout at a M43 and snagged some, some utility lines. They actually, they didn't grab our lines, they grabbed the telecommunications, but still caused damage to our poles and power lines there. Broken jumper wire there. Beach safety. We went, went around and staff numbered all the, the signs, or all the flag poles, I'm sorry.
It was installed on May 5th?
Yep. We did some, we were having issues where the buoys were getting washed out along the pier, so we set some more permanent structures out there in the form of PVC poles. They get removed, but they don't move from the weather, so it kind of, it kind of helps maintain that barrier. We received some Life Ring cabinets from the Rotary Club that have been, been installed. Matt Day did a good job of, he applied for an MMRA grant and got some AEDs for both of the beach safety vehicles.
These AEDs actually came from the Rotary Club grant that was one of the, the donations we received this year.
He, he's got a couple, he got a couple more too from MMRA, I'm sorry. New HVAC, I think we all were aware of how that, how miserable that was here through the summer. Matt did a good job hanging these, working with contractors right out here in the hallway.
Yep, right out here, Mayor Smith. Got this, this structure donated here to City Hall. And this will be featuring some of the businesses around South Haven. We've got Sherman's out there, but Do-It and other businesses are going to be giving items to populate that cabinet, Miss.
And it's kind of fun talking to them because they're all looking forward to various ways to show off what they, they have and what they make, so.
Very good.
Keep your eyes out, more things, it'll be, it'll be full before you know it.
Matt Day worked with the, sorry, it wasn't, it was a.
The American Legion?
The American Legion, not the BFW, to commemorate James McLuhan. Water filtration plant. Some more council priorities posted up. We have them everywhere. Make sure everybody knows. This is a generator for the booster stations that was leased from Motor Pool by Wastewater Treatment Plant, but it was used by Water Filtration Plant, so that's now stored over there. Here's some flock, flock paddles that were damaged, been, been since repaired. There's a tap that was required to be installed at the booster station where the, where the standpipe is. So water and sewer staff worked with the Water Filtration Plant to get that installed, be compliant with the Safe Drinking Water Act. Here's some, some, the north basins being brought down and for cleaning and various repairs. Engineering Department. These guys run the sidewalk replacement program, so if there's any sidewalks that need to be replaced, they work with our contractors for pouring concrete, street staff for grinding various trips, trip hazards. Here, this is recently installed by the splash pad. We contract with Pitman to do some center line painting. Our staff isn't capable, we would be squiggly lines. Various flooding issues repaired. This is by Burger King on Elm Street.
Yep, that was the major work that we did this year was Lee Street got resurfaced. I think that was in Wendy and Jeff, your word, and I know that those folks are really happy. Also, we did Elm Street and the back part of that, which is Broadway.
Broadway.
Broadway. Let's service lines. All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Yes, sir. I should clarify, those stats for the police department will be on their way up because those were just as of November. So we're going to see those go up a little bit because we're not yet at the end of the year, so.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. And that, is everyone good to keep going onward for a few minutes? Okay. That takes us to public comment where citizens in the audience are going to be heard on items that are not on the agenda. So there's something you'd like to talk about that we haven't already talked about? We'd love to hear from you. Come on up, state your name and address. We'll give you up to five minutes. We've just stunned everybody tonight. Good evening, Bishop.
Good evening. I first want to thank Kate, excuse me, Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I want to first thank Kate and, I believe it's the city staff, SP Public Works. Want to thank Public Works for assisting several residents. Ward 1, for coming out. There were several residents that actually pitched in to buy Christmas lights. They purchased Christmas lights along with myself to be put on a tree at Elkenburg Park. That was something very special. I've lived in this area for 58 years and there were some older residents. I believe Bishop Sharab was one of them. Some of the women from Ward, Ward 1 Action Committee pitched in to purchase lights to put on the tree. And we were able to get those lights put up by Kate and the staff, Public Works. And I want to give kudos to them, thank them. It looks nice, some, but one of the residents came out and put a timer on it. Because I was going out every night unplugging it, I mean, in the mornings unplugging it. But I guess they actually thought about a timer, put a timer on it. But it was special, those little, little things like that, you know, brings them back in focus. So that was, I appreciate their support. Also want to thank the, the council. I wish the council and the staff a happy holiday season. You know, so often we, we take those times like this for granted. You know, we get to share those special moments in our own home and, or wherever our personal places of visits. But with that being said, that I want to remind the council and the oncoming members the other fact that so many people that were born and raised in this area are not blessed as we are to enjoy those special times in our homes. We sometimes do take those things for granted, but as you know, there, there, there's a homeless population that is growing in this area. And it, it's a problem in a lot of areas. In Kalamazoo, I talk to people all the time and I don't know about you, that stuff moves me when I see tents. And I actually, I don't know if the city recognized this, but I also, I saw a tent not too long ago under the greenhouse at Elkenburg. So that number is growing. It stayed there a couple of nights, but somebody, I guess, told them they had to move. That, that's, that's become a growing number, especially holiday seasons when it's a time of being around friends and family and being around the fireplace and all that stuff. And yet, there are a lot of people that are not that blessed. They're outside in the cold in the parks trying to stay warm. I want to remind the, the council and the oncoming members of the urgency and how important it is that we spearhead a project that will bring back, or will at least bring affordable housing back into this area. There's a growing number, I, someone told me, I don't know how true it is, but it is a growing number of our own students, South Haven students that are homeless. First I thought, now how is that possible? But I guess if the families are homeless, if the parents are homeless, then child can't. Now imagine trying to go to school during the day and not know where you're going to lay your head at night. And then, this time like this makes it even worse for them because they look around and see the smile that the holiday season brings to so many other people and they can't experience that. So I just want to remind this council, oncoming members, that we really have to do something. I know, I know everybody's focusing on short-term rental, but affordable housing is a big issue. It is a big issue. And to me, I would probably put that up, well, affordable housing port. So, thank you.
I agree. Thank you, have your holidays. Anybody else? One, two, three. No. I thought it was moving, no, I'm sorry. All right. Kate, city manager comments.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We are hoping to have the ice rink open this Wednesday. Of course, we were just kind of waiting to make sure that there was some ice to be formed. It looks like with today's weather, that might be very helpful. Also speaking about today's weather, I know our electric crews have been out today. This is the kind of weather they work in, so we really appreciate all their hard work. Going back to the ice rink, so again, we're hoping to be open this, this Wednesday. If you saw the update that went out last Friday, we are bringing back season passes. So I know that's a pretty, pretty exciting for a lot of folks. I do want to caution everybody, it seems like we've had a weird kind of winter so far with some 40, 45, sometimes 50 degree weather. Just know, even with that new chiller, if we're getting up to the 50s, that chiller might not be able to keep up with, you know, sunny, sunny days and 50 degree weather. So, the ice rink will be just, if the ice is, if the ice is well and, and able to be skated on, we'll have it open. But just be able to understand that it might be changing if the weather doesn't get more winter-like. The Dyckman fireplace was tested, tested last week, if you saw that. There's just a few more items that we're working through to get that open. We're hoping it will be open when the ice rink opens, but we'll see how that goes. Just to let you know that we are planning a ribbon cutting with Shout and the donors for February 4th, so that would be the icebreaker weekend. I do want to congratulate a council member, Steve Schlock, Mayor Scott Smith. Thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working for you. It's been an honor working with you. And I look forward to working with the new council that's coming in, but I did want to say thank you for all that you've done for the city. And lastly, Christmas tree pickup, if you, I know it's too hard, it's, nobody wants to think about after Christmas, but if you do have a live tree and you're looking to dispose of that, have it out on your curb by Wednesday, January 10th at 6:00 a.m., and that will be picked up by Best Way for free. Those are my comments. And Merry Christmas.
Very good, thank you. Anything for Kate?
I just had a quick question about the work on Phoenix right now.
Mm-hmm. So we did have a water main break over at Prospect in Phoenix that was notified, I think, Saturday. So the water main break has been fixed, and so we're just waiting for the, the concrete to be repoured and, and patched. Once that's done, then we can take off those, kind of like that lane departure.
Okay.
Thank you.
If nothing else, council comments. One more time, I will start on my left. Good evening.
Well, first I want to say, um. Happy holidays to each and every one of you. I also want to wish my fellow councilmen, Steve Schlock and the mayor, I mean, Steve Schlock and Mayor Scott, the best in their endeavors. I'm sure we'll see you around town and doing other things and. I'm going to miss the old guy sitting next to me. I miss, I miss the mayor as well. It's been great working with you guys. I also want to thank the residents that helped donate, in donating the light, the light, I can't even get it out, the Christmas lights for the Christmas tree at Elkenburg Park. There was a resident on Ward 1 that kind of, that suggested we do that. And so I was like, well, I'll just ask. And I talked to Kate and she gave me some ideas. And so, long story short, a lot of people donated, including Bishop Wilkins. And we wanted to say thank you. It's the first time ever we've ever decorated the tree, so I think that was great. And a lot of people like it and are enjoying it, so. If you haven't seen the tree in Elkenburg Park, please drive by. And again, happy holidays to each and every one of you.
From the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank the residents of Ward 3 for entrusting in me the last eight years. So I appreciate that. And I would like to thank Kate. She was assistant city manager when I started. I'd like to Kate to thank Brian Desette as well and Bob Burr, because they pretty much talked me into, to trying for this thing, so, in the first place. But, um. Megan, thank you for all the lunches and dinners you have to order for me and put up with me. Griffin, thank you for all the extra work you do in answering all my questions. And Natalie, I'd like to thank you as well for answering the phone calls when I question things sometimes as far as events and, and things of that nature. It's been a pleasure to work with, with you as well. City council, it's been a pleasure. I'll get with you in a couple of months, see if you miss me yet. But other than that, I, I've had fun, I've learned a lot, and I've enjoyed working with all you. So thank you very much.
I can, I'll say, it's been an honor to serve with you and we will definitely miss you when it comes time to do our budget, when we do our budget review. So, yeah, that, that I would like to thank Steve, it was been an honor to work with him. I'd like to thank the mayor. Thank you for choosing me to be your mayor pro temp. Your positivity and excitement for the city is contagious. And when I had my doubts about running again, no, we're doing so many good things. And, and he was right. He did, the mayor's gotten a lot of great things done in the city. So thank you to both of you and I'm glad I was able to serve with both of you. And then happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. See everyone next year.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you both for your service and for showing me the ropes the last couple of years. And definitely will miss you when the new year comes. I thought it was funny when Senator Ness, but when we were taking pictures and he said, "Pretend like you like each other." But actually, like, I think we all get along and it's a really great group to work with and I'm so happy to be a part of it. So I will miss you guys, but wish you all the best. And then I just wanted to say happy holidays to everybody else and I'm looking forward to the new year.
Thank you.
Last meeting, I thanked my fellow council member, Schlock. Today, I want to thank Mayor Smith. I could spend a lot of time talking about Scott's service to the community, but I want to thank Scott from a personal standpoint because he's really helped me be a better city council member. So thank you, Scott, for, for what you've taught me over the last six years. I really appreciate it. The, the presentation, end of the year presentation is just a good reminder of everything city staff does for this city. A lot of times we don't recognize the hard work that, that everyone puts in and, and the extra work they put in and the pride they show in their work, so that's great. And finally, once again, a happy holidays to everybody. Safe, safe holidays also. That's it.
Thank you. So here it is. It's kind of crazy. Okay. My job is to not get choked up. Okay. So first and foremost, I just want to thank, you know, everybody, to the residents, council members, everybody, just thank you for allowing me to be your mayor for the past six years. It's, it's been an honor, it's amazing, Annie, don't, listen, it's, there's a lot more good than that, I'll just leave it at that. So, I mean, it's very bittersweet. We have just amazing residents, people, staff. Congratulations to you, Annie, as you look to step into this role, you'll be great. I've got your back if you need me. My fellow council members, I can't thank all of you enough. You work hard, we, we get a ton of stuff done, we do get along. Ms. Tisha, I'm always happy to call you on my left. I look forward to great things. You're my first ward rep, so now I'll be calling you up, you know, catch you voted in, so you'll be doing great stuff for us, I know that. Thank you for being an educator. We need good people in those roles. Steve, you've always been a strong voice. We know where you come from, we respect that. You do your homework, you stick to your guns, you have a ton of experience as a developer, as a business owner, and you will be missed, guarantee you that. So now we're going to have that drink. Did you save that for me? He's got one hidden in his fridge for us. We're going to have that drink. We're going to have that drink. All right. To Jeff, thank you for being my left-hand guy for several years now, you're definitely a voice of reason, appreciate, you take my phone calls, you've done a ton, just, you're always, and you're, it's nice also having your eyes and ears in the school, again, I appreciate your education, I know your background, and I know you bring that to the kids as well, so I appreciate that, so I look forward to going skiing pretty soon, how's that sound? So we'll do that. To Wendy, again, just, you're our, you're our young one up here with kids and schools, and I appreciate that, and you've done a ton, and you, again, you bring that perspective, so your job is recruit more young parents with kids, you know, young people to get up on this board, we need young voices up here, which is good. To George, we are fortunate as a community to have you up here, I will say that, you, your technical experience, your work experience, council, planning, BPU, thank you also for, you are an extremely great voice of reason when I've got a, George gets a, oh, what's got, got, what am I thinking? So I appreciate George taking those phone calls, and just on a nice little side note, see, George is my, my hero, he's my, I, a lot of us go to the gym in the morning, Griffin I know as well, but George, I will tease him sometimes, because I'm always happy when I'm up at 6:00 a.m., swiping my card at the wellness center, ready to go and workout before my workday, every now and again, George is on his way out.
He's already done.
He's going to bed at the pool. Out. So, I just, my hat's off to be able to do that, so, nice to see him using not my play place, so that's good, so. Anyway, but seriously, great people, I look forward to the new folks that are up here, you've got great things coming, so that's fantastic. So now I get to throw our staff under the bus for just a minute, because we just have great staff, so many, if you watch the slides, if you watch our people up here, swearing people in, recognizing officers, how fortunate we already have, the staff we have, starts at the top. Kate, you, you know, you're a great city manager, you have been, you put up with a ton. I think all of us, many times, you know, at the end, we're patting you on the back, say great job, she's got a great background, we all know she's an attorney, but she brings so much experience, and you can work through the most challenging of times, I will say that, I mean, let's face it, we started the fall, we had an ice rink vendor, and now we've got a new ice rink vendor, and it's us, and Kate and staff pulled that off in no time. How fortunate we'd be able to have that capability, staff that are flexible, willing to work hard, so I just, I appreciate your toughness over the last couple of years and your willingness to do that, so, thank you. Griffin, yes, you know, another local who's come back here to work with us, fun to watch you work, you, you can answer phone calls, you take all of our questions, you bring a ton of technical experience and background, great work on economic development, look forward to still helping out whenever I can with that. Good work on the Young Professionals Group, and I'm just sorry that I aged out, other than that, it's all good, appreciate you. Megan, you're, you're a little force of nature, you, Steve said, you know, whether, order meals, I, how many emails did we respond to? Like a hundred and some thousand, that's nuts. Anyway, it's from documents requests, everything else, and you smile, you're kind, you run elections, you keep us organized, and the good news is, you won't need to buy as many pens, because I won't be making off with your pens anymore, so, that's all good, so. And then Kim back there, Kim White's great, I mean, HR, we're very fortunate, you fill a lot of positions, policies, procedures, training, and the DEI work, and just watching kind of what goes on up there, I think we sort of gave you a challenge a few years ago, and you've taken it and run with it, which is great. We have great leadership, we've got Natalie, you know, back there, Police Department, we have Shays, we have Brandon Hens, I mean, I think we all sleep better at night, knowing that you two are in charge, and we just all greatly appreciate all of the, you know, brave men and women who suit up every day to keep us safe, protected from police fire, I mean, we just saw pictures of our lineman out there at all hours, and they're kind of taking care of stuff for us, so we just, we're fortunate, have a great city staff, kind of all levels, whether it be the BPU, down here, you got zoning, code enforcement, water, electric, just you name it, so I appreciate that. I want to thank our township supervisors, we're fortunate, we have real good relationships with the surrounding townships, so Ross Stein, Alan Overiser, Nancy Whaley, just good people, we don't always see them here, but they're important parts of what goes on in the background that, you know, as we look at our interactions with Shays and whatnot, so it's great. So, so I debated about when I was going to throw out my next little two cents, I'm just going to share it, because I was encouraged to see, as you, one of the slides showed all of our departments showing our priority, here are the city council priorities, so my, I just said my favor, I just, to ask the councils to always, always, always keep kind of our, you know, what do we do, what is, what is government about, you know, those core functions of government, you know, we talk about setting priorities, but I always think we should, I'll pitch it again, keep those up top, because, and maybe it's because when I, way back in the olden days of 2002, one of our very first meetings, we were back in this office back here, which we never get to go into anymore, and we were told that guess what? We got a water plant that's failing, and we need a new one, and we don't have money for it, there's not a plan or anything else, so what shall we do? So we made a plan, said we got to replace it, we got to have, we have to always save for the future, so hence we look at those bills, we see capital replacement, capital replacement, so we just, I asked that we should always keep those at the priority, we didn't have a road plan, we made a road plan, so just, I think it's nice to, I think also, as we see the staff is looking at that, so maybe we should make it clear that we value what, what is that stuff? It's what we spend most of our time and money if we look at it, it's what our staff's doing, so I just, I hope we always continue to keep those top of mind, how's that sound? So, but at the end of the day, I'll just say we've had a lot of fun, I just want to leave it at that, we've, I mean, we've done a lot of work, I was just going through, I know you, you crossed off a few things, but we had a high water crisis, that was an adventure, we had docks underwater, we had no boats in the harbor, we promptly slipped into a pandemic, no fun at all, I think we managed, we wore masks, we had Zoom meetings, weren't those exciting? I was, I remember I was downtown one Saturday shopping at Gravity, I think it was the only thing open, at the wine place, of course, I was down buying wine, I was the only car on Phoenix Road. Only one, I'll never forget it, there I was, let's hope that never happens again. But I still, we stayed focused on economic development, we became a redevelopment-ready community, we did Commercial Rehab District, a ton of development downtown, ton of manufacturing development, we saw them tonight, Spencer, Grace, Revere, Lovejoy, millions of dollars, bunch of new businesses, Gold Lake Marines now in town, you're seeing housing being built downtown, you've got the Locker Hales Project, you've got the Consumers Project, lots and lots and lots of good stuff. We did the social district we talked about, we built a splash pad, we did Kids Corner, we put Bear Park back in there, so there's, we got a lot of stuff done despite having kind of a crappy start to everything, so, anyway, while we, so I don't forget, I want to just mention again, thanks to Shout, Tom Renner, Bob Cope, as we talk about that fire feature tonight, because thanks to them it happened. And last but not least, my wife snuck in in backpack, I didn't get to call her out before she snuck out, but to my wife, who's put up with just a few years now of missed Monday nights and whatever going on, and my kids, who have put up with it as well, this, I probably should have given her a proclamation tonight, but I didn't, but, I'll get her, I'll make up one later. But no, but they, they, they've put up with a lot, to all of our, to all of the spouses and loved ones and family members that kind of put up with our schedules and all that stuff from us to city staff, I just, I can't say enough that a lot goes on, but again, I'll just say thank you to all the community, everybody, it's been a ton of fun, I will miss everybody, but I'll be around if you need me, so happy holidays, and on that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, happy holidays, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, boy. (applause)[1784.11]